...and make policy to the district. The superintendent manages this district. This is a meeting of the board in public, not a meeting of the public. This meeting is being recorded and will become part of our Elizabeth Board of Education permanent record. In order for that recording to adequately reflect the proceedings, please refrain from talking while others are speaking. We also ask that you silence the sounds of your electronic devices since it is legally mandated that these proceedings be accordingly or accurately recorded. We may ask, we may have to ask for order periodically should noise begin to interfere with our recording. There will be a public portion for citizens to address the board. Participants for this public, participants, participants for this public portion must personally sign up prior to the start of the meeting so that they may have the opportunity to speak. The sign-in sheet states the name, address, a telephone number, and reasons for that person and the reasons that they want to speak, whether it's an agenda item or an item regular general education comment. We are pleased that you have taken the time this evening to join us for our Board of Education meeting. Thank you for your interest in Elizabeth Public Schools. Roll call.
Barbosa. Carvalho.
Here.
Chavez. Jacobs. Marina Ortega. Naron. Incalves Pastana. Rivera. Dorjely.
Here, thank you.
Before we begin, I would like everyone to please rise for a moment of silence. For Anastasia Kua, retired custodian from school number 21, Virginia Tantall teacher from Edison Career and Technology Academy. Angela Domingio, retired general worker from school number four. Teresa Anne Palantano, wife of Pat Talantano, Elizabeth School, Elizabeth Public School spokesperson. Terra Recita Marcel Alvila, sister of Alberto, excuse me, Alberto Marcel, our chief information officer, and Leonardo Roger Carmazano, father of Leonardo Carmazano, which is the vice president of the EEA and at school number 15. Thank you. Please stand for the presentation of colors from Admiral William F. Halsey, Junior Health and Public Safety Academy, junior ROTC.
Five, eyes and gloves. And re, put it. Raise your gloves. Forward, march. Five, one. Three, six, march.
At this time, I'll have board member Jerry Jacobs lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I will remain, will remain standing for the Star Spangled Banner.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air? Gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
And re, march. Raise your gloves. Forward, march. Five, one. Five and six. Forward, march. And re, five.
Thank you to our students at Amhalsing Academy. At this time, if board member Maria Carvalho can lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
As a member of the Elizabeth Public School Professional Learning Community, I will treat people as I wish to be treated. To do that, I pledge to: Understand that the school community is a special place. Listen respectfully when someone else is speaking by paying close attention and not interrupting. Speak in a calm voice and use proper language. Dress appropriately for teaching and learning. Inspire the best in myself and others by celebrating success and learning from mistakes. Care about others by demonstrating acts of kindness. Be a lifelong learner by taking every opportunity to learn from others.
Thank you so much. You may be seated. I will now like to have our superintendent of schools introduce our student representative for this moment.
Thank you, Madam President. It is my pleasure to introduce Maria Zavala. Principal John Markowitz shared that Maria Zavala is a non-voting Board of Education student representative for Thomas A. Edison Career and Technical Academy. As a top-ranked senior and member of the National Honor Society, she also serves on the student government and the Senior Advisory Committee. Maria is currently enrolled in the Cosmetology Program at Thomas Edison Career and Technical Academy, and her favorite class happens to be art. Maria is described by her teachers as someone who is patient, friendly, ambitious. Her positive attitude is her most admirable asset. After graduating, Maria's goal is to pursue a nursing track. She has applied to Montclair State University, Union College, St. Peter's University, and Sienna College. At this time, we would like to invite Maria Zavala to please join us.
Mr. Kennedy, can you please add our student representatives to the roll call, please?
Yes, duly noted. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, the microphones are open for public comment to those who have signed in prior to this session. I will call individuals to the microphone based on the order of the sign-in sheet. Each statement made by the participant shall be limited to three minutes in duration. The total time for public comment shall be limited to 60 minutes. No individual shall be able to yield their time to another individual. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. No participant may address or question board members individually. Each speaker shall comply with the respects with Board Policy 9322. Copies were provided next to the sign-in sheet earlier. Any person in violation of the policy will be warned by myself and their comments terminated. If such violations continue, this individual will be escorted out of the meeting. Timelims will be strictly enforced. No personal attacks on individuals, no vocal or indecent language. A person may address the board no more than once during a single meeting, and comments will not be debated. Any person in violation of this policy will be warned. As a reminder, this is a meeting of the board in public, not a meeting of the public. At this time, I call up Maria Manderos. I apologize if I said your last name incorrectly.
Good evening. I just want to know why is the meeting being pushed up to 5:30? You know, a lot of people that want to come, parents want to speak, advocates, you know, they want to come, but you start pushing it earlier and earlier, these people work. But that's not why I'm here. Two months ago, okay, there was an allegation made against my niece, J.C. She's not a thief, what was said about her. And the individual that talked about her, she should be investigating on what she does. And that's for Mr. Petit, okay, the principal. I don't get along with him. We don't like each other. But as a principal, he's doing a terrific job.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. While I was speaking, I did say I do not want you to name any individuals, so I'm going to ask that you don't do that.
All right, I already did, so it doesn't matter.
But I'm asking that you refrain from continuing.
Okay, all right, whatever. So turnaround, as a principal, I have to say, my grandkids go to that school. He has brought order into that school. He's cleaned up a lot that was going on. Parents feel welcome. He greets people. Even though I have my problems with him, but I'm not going to take away the wonderful job that he does at that school. My personal problems with him is my personal attacks with him. But that's somebody that had put him down, that's not correct. In the past, my grandchildren were bullied. They wasn't getting the right education. I could say that he's doing a wonderful, amazing job at that school. And what they said about him and what they said about my niece, I would like that person to come and show me the proof of the allegations because I don't take that lightly. We're not no thieves. We don't do things dishonest, well, I may do it, but not her. We may do things dishonest, but she doesn't do it. So that's why I'm clarifying J.C.'s name as of now.
Thank you for your comments. At this time, I close the public comment portion of the meeting. Our superintendent of schools will present the community updates. At this time, I'm going to ask all my board members if we can go to the front row or be seated in the front row, please.
Thank you.
To start off our presentations for this evening, we would like to take the opportunity to show the appreciation to a special group of people who are vital to the success of our schools and, most importantly, to our students. The nine members of the Elizabeth Board of Education are selfless volunteers who spend very long hours working to ensure that all of our students have the opportunity to learn and grow. In honor of School Board Recognition Month, we would like to present the Elizabeth Board of Education with a video to show them our appreciation for their leadership, their dedication, and the sacrifices that they make. I could ask, please, our IT department to please showcase the video for this month honoring our board.
Where has New Jersey's locally-elected and appointed Boards of Education play a vital role in ensuring that their local school districts meet state standards and adhere to state and federal education statute and regulations, with the goal of preparing all students for college and the workplace, thereby enabling them to compete in a global economy? And where is New Jersey's 5,000 nonpartisan local Board of Education members and charter school trustees, our public servants who dedicate their time without pay or benefit to the oversight of school district operations, through sound financial practices and comprehensive policies on curriculum, staffing, and other areas to ensure the well-being and academic achievement of all students in the district? And where is the New Jersey School Boards Association has declared January 2024 to be School Board Recognition Month? We thank you, members of the Elizabeth Public Schools Board of Education.
So I would like to take a moment now to be able to present to our Board of Education members a small token of our appreciation for the amazing work that you do. Ask Mr. Kennedy to join us. We're going to start with our board president, Charlene Bathelis Dorjely. Madam President, if you wouldn't mind taking a stand right over here. Next going to continue it with Mr. Naron, we're going to set it aside. Diane Barbosa. Mr. Naron, ah, perfect timing, perfect timing. Perfect timing. Right next to Madam President, congratulations. Diane Barbosa. Maria Carvalho. Eliana Chavez. Stephanie Pastana. Rosa Moreno Ortega. Congratulations. Jerry Jacobs. Much appreciated. Isaiah's Rivera. We'd like to ask our student representative to please join us, please. And I would like to take this moment to turn the microphone over to our board president. Oh, wonderful. So we'll take this moment to take a picture. Wonderful, wonderful, absolutely.
I apologize. I need a five-minute recess break, please.
Thank you.
Do I need a motion to go back? No, okay, we're back on, thank you. Thank you for indulging me in that time. I do want to say a few words to my fellow colleagues at this moment. I want to take a moment to express my profound gratitude to the esteemed members of the Elizabeth Board of Education, whose unwavering dedication has played a pivotal role in shaping the education landscape in our community. It has been a privilege to serve alongside each and every one of you, and you guys have an incredible mark on my journey. First and foremost, I want to extend my heartfelt appreciation to board member and vice president Stan Naron, a true friend and former campaign manager. Stan, as my current vice president, your exemplary leadership and mentorship has not only guided our youth in Elizabeth, but has been a source of inspiration for all of us. Your wisdom and love for our mission is truly commendable. Moving forward, board member Maria Carvalho, my right-hand lady since assuming the presidency in 2016, has consistently demonstrated a heart for the Elizabeth community that knows no bounds. Her tireless efforts to go above and beyond for those in need set a standard for compassion and leadership that we all deeply value. A trailblazer in her own right, board member Stephanie Calvez, now Pastana, made her history as the youngest member elected to the Elizabeth Board of Education. Stephanie, your unwavering support and dedication has been a source of strength to our entire team. With gratitude, we appreciate and acknowledge the presence of our board member Diane Barbosa, our personal doctor on the team. Diane, your gentle and caring heart, coupled with admirable love for our students, go beyond what words can express. Your grace is a guiding light for all of us. Your grace is a guiding light for all of us. A resounding voice of advocacy, board member Jerry Jacobs stands firm for the course he believes in, or the causes that he believes in. Jerry, your commitment to being a voice for the people is both commendable and inspiring. Your presence adds immense of strength to our collective effort. When questions arise concerning curriculum or assessments, we always turn to expertise of board member Rosa Moreno Ortega, a fellow district teacher. Rosa, your willingness to step in and assist, coupled with your genuine kindness, makes you an invaluable asset to our team. Over the past year, I've had the privilege to serve as vice president alongside board member Ileana Chevres. Ileana, your unwavering advocacy and fearless truth speaking for those in need are inspiring. Thank you for your relentless pursuit of justice and equality. Finally, a warm welcome to our newest team member, board member Isaiah Rivera. Isaiah, your enthusiasm and eagerness to learn and inject a fresh perspective into our discussions has been invaluable. Your presence, even in those early stages, have already proven to be a valuable asset to our collective goals. In conclusion to my entire team, I extend my deepest gratitude to each board member here. Regardless of the unique roles we play, our shared dreams unite us in one cohesive team. Together, we forge ahead with a singular vision, committed to the betterment of our community and the education of our future generation. Thank you, and happy Board Member Recognition Month. Before I move on, would any board member like to say anything?
Madam President, I think you left yourself out, so we need to honor you. And let's give her a big round of applause for her leadership in being not only a trailblazer, but a true role model to a lot of young women throughout our district, and standing for what you believe in always. So we thank you for your dedication, and we thank you for this honor and recognition in celebrating us. So, thank you so much.
Absolutely, you're welcome. Anyone else?
Madam President?
Yes.
As one of the senior members of this team, I want to thank you for taking the time out today to acknowledge all of us. And I hope that you know how much we truly appreciate you and all of the hard work that you have put into this and that you will continue to for the children of the City of Elizabeth. This is not an easy thing to do every day, day in and day out. We don't get paid for this. And nine times out of 10, we don't get a call to say thank you or great job. It's usually, I have a problem, and how can you fix it? So it is a weight on all of us, and we all carry it really, really well. So I am proud to sit here with each and every one of you, and thank you for your service to our community and to our children.
Thank you, thank you. Anyone else?
All right, seeing none, thank you. At this time, I would like to ask Mr. John Swisher, partner of Swiftly Cloo-- no, no, okay, no problem. At this time, we are going to review the-- oh, someone else is coming, okay. Oh, you are the Mr. Swisher, okay. Oh, okay, got it. He's going to come and do the present the auditor's report for the year ended from June 30, 2023. Mr. Swisher.
Hi, I am John Swisher. I'm with the auditing firm of Swiftly Clooney and Company. And we were selected to do the audit of the district for the year ended June 30, 2023. I'm here this evening to present the results of that audit. I had the opportunity to meet with the Finance Committee the other day, and went over all the stuff that I'm going to go over with all you folks right now. So each district in the state of New Jersey is required to have an audit. An independent auditor has to come out and look at the records. It's a financial statement and compliance audit, not an operational audit, which is a little bit different. And the results of those audits are contained in the two reports that you would have received. You have the large report, which is the ACFER, the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, and then the small report, which is the Auditor's Management Report. I'm going to start with the larger report. That's got all the numbers in it, okay, a lot of numbers. It's a big, big report, and I'm sure you guys are all going to memorize it. But the most important thing to me in that report is the opinion that's in the front. That's what you really hired me to do, is to render an opinion on your financial statements as to whether they're free from material misstatement. And that means you can rely upon them. The board can rely upon them, the public can rely upon them, the state, the federal government, et cetera. And what you're looking for is an unmodified opinion. That means that the business office is able to turn out financial statements that you can rely upon. And I'm happy to say that the district did get an unmodified opinion. So that's good news. There's another opinion in the report that talks about internal controls and compliance. And here we do have one issue that I'm going to bring up. It's in the report. It's a comment, and it's a recommendation. And regards the food service fund of the district, there are rules and regulations put together by the Department of Agriculture that talks about the amount of money you can have in food service as surplus at the end of the year. And basically, it's three months of average expenditures. If you exceed that amount, we're required to put a comment in the report. And the district did exceed that amount. They have too much surplus in the federal government's eyes in food service. And it's interesting to note that this is kind of out of the district's hands. Our firm does 38 school districts across the state. And a lot of folks have ended up in this situation due to the fact that a lot of federal money has been passed on to the districts as a result of COVID. So we have this bubble of money that's flowing through our system, but by the rules, they're saying that we have to spend that down. Now, administration, even coming into the year, already knew that they had this issue, and they were already very proactive in dealing with it. So what will happen is you guys will do a corrective action plan to spend that money down, generally speaking, buying equipment for the food service fund. So although this is a comment and recommendation, it's important to note it was out of the district's hands, and it's quite easy to deal with. You'll have your corrective action plan, and that should be settled. There is one last opinion in the report in regards to the single audit, which is an opinion on your federal and state grants. When you expend over a certain amount of money, we have to go and actually do a deeper dive into the grants. And as you can imagine, the ESER funds that we got as a result of the COVID pandemic is on our list of things to look at. And so we have to look at the compliance that's dictated by the federal government. And I'm happy to say that we looked at all their compliance steps, and the district is in compliance. So three letters, good news in all of them, as far as I'm concerned, with the exception of the one comment and recommendation that's going to get taken care of. And that comment, I should note, is in the small report. That's the Auditor's Management Report. That's a report that's required by the state of New Jersey Department of Education, where they ask us to report on certain areas of compliance that they deem to be important, payroll, purchasing, food service. And you'll find that comment and recommendation in that report. Lastly, I'd like to touch on the financial condition of the district. And it's good to say that the surplus is up at the end of the year, and that's good news. More importantly, I always touch on the fact that you put money into your restricted reserves, your capital reserve and your maintenance reserve. And that's really important in a district of this size. You have so many buildings. We know the age of those buildings. So you're being very responsible by funding up the capital reserve and the maintenance reserve so you can take care of these issues on an ongoing basis. So to me, it's a very good report, okay? You guys are clean in terms of the compliance, the financial statement presentation, and the surplus is in good shape. So I will pause here and see if there's any questions from the board. Okay, hearing none. I always like to take a moment at the end to thank the Administration Superintendent's Office and the Business Office. We've got Mr. Kennedy and Mr. Mahatra here. They do a great job. They've got a great team. They've done a very good job over the last couple of years in assembling that team. And I had pointed out at the Finance Committee meeting that you replace your payroll clerk here, okay, which is a very important thing to do. Payroll is very important to the district. You had a very good payroll clerk. She's retired. And Mr. Mahatra in particular has done a good job in terms of building in, like, you know, good people to follow up. You guys are a big corporation here. It's a big budget. And there's planning that goes on on an ongoing basis to make sure that we have people that can fill in. And so that was a really good thing. It doesn't end up in the report, okay? But that's a very important thing that we see. So it's just indicative of good management. So you have these two big reports. If you have any questions on them over the course of the year, reach out to Mr. Kennedy, Mr. Mahatra. We can come back. And I should actually say, my cohort, Mr. Zimmerman is in the audience. He's the manager and actually does all the work. I take all the credit. But I did bring him along as well. So if you have any questions, just reach out for us, and we'll be there. Have a good evening.
Thank you so much. As board president, my vision is to promote community engagement and unite us as a team, with each board member contributing to a specific initiative throughout the year. This month, the month of January, marks the first initiative, the launch of a youth mentoring program sponsored by Vice President Stanley Neron. That involves a partnership between the Elizabeth Public Schools and Elizabeth Police Department. Throughout the school year, officers will engage with our students by helping develop life skills, including patience, perseverance, and other social-emotional skills. Students will engage in educational and interactive sessions to foster positive relationships and promote civic responsibility, and improve in many key academic and social-emotional development areas. At this time, we are going to showcase the highlight reel of the community, or to our community. The full video will be available on the district's website.
Hey, everybody. My name is Stan Neron, and I'm honored to be your vice president of the Elizabeth Board of Education for the year of 2024. We're so excited to launch a number of initiatives this year. But launching the year, we want to start and honor National Mentoring Month, which is in the month of January. I want you to think about mentorship. Mentorship is basically getting guidance, having a role model, and having somebody really be a great coach in your life.
The mentorship program is an initiative which we're starting this year. And what we are hoping to do is to bridge the gap between police officers and the community that we serve. And we are reaching out through the Board of Education to partner better with the students that are here. And what we are hoping to do is to pass along life skills.
So in your life, you have many mentors. And we believe with the Elizabeth Police Department and the school board coming together, we can have our police officers and our youth get an opportunity to learn from each other, grow together, and create a better quality of life here in our city.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. And stay tuned for the next initiative next month. But we're looking forward to the mentorship program throughout the year as well. All right. Yes, Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, Madam President. At this time, we would like to have our student representative present her monthly report.
Good evening, Board Commissioners, Superintendent Ms. Hogan Meyer, and community members. I am Maria Zavala, student of Thomas A. Edison Career and Technical Academy, and one of the student representatives for the Elizabeth Public Schools Board of Education for the 2023-2024 school year. The daily life of a Tecta charger includes positive greeting and support from staff. Thanks to our focus on education and social mental learning, we have seen positive growth in school culture. We are continuing our mission to elevate all career and technical progress. This year alone, there have been improvements made to collision-prepared cosmetology and construction technology. A full renovation of our tea chain kitchen and tea room is in progress as well. We have also added two more workshops, our Unite Manufacturing Program, as well as welcoming back Mr. Andretti, who is spearheading the return and reopening of ShopRide Junior. Banners have been put in front of the building displaying our school's name in each CTE workshop we offer. Our auditorium is being renovated and set to begin construction soon. Included in our mission is ensuring our students leave our academy with industry certifications. Students can earn certifications in cosmetology, automotive technology, collision repairs, ShopRide Junior, and both collisionary arts programs. And just yesterday, our cosmetology students got a work-based learning experience when they welcomed senior citizens to their shop and provided them with free services and earned hours towards their program completion. While our academy has a career and technical theme with a deep concentration on career readiness, we are also preparing our students for college. We have landed more opportunities for seniors, such as more college tours, bringing college representatives to meet with the seniors, as well as the fast walk workshop night. We are thankful for our school administration and the EPS Board of Education for these opportunities. We are looking forward to the clash of classes, which will be a grade-level competition in academics and physical challenges. We have seasonal pep rallies, fall, winter, and spring, to promote school spirit. We've also expanded the National Honor Society by actively recruiting more students. There have also been more clubs offered this year. For example, STEM, art, environmental, literary, multicultural yearbook. Currently, we are promoting our Black History Month doors initiative in our class to highlight the accomplishments and achievements of Black historical figures. I am so grateful to be given this amazing opportunity. I want to thank everybody who showed up, especially a big thank you to my mom. If it wasn't for her, I wouldn't be here representing my school. I also want to thank Ms. Nunez, Ms. Glynn, Ms. Craven, and our principal, Mr. Markowitz, for helping me and guiding me throughout this journey. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, and welcome to the board.
Thank you.
We will now review the board agenda. For Tab 1A and Tab 1B, official and private minutes. Are there any additions or deletions that need to be done to the meeting minutes that happened on December 13 and January 3? Excuse me, December 13, 2023, and January 3, 2024? Seeing no additions or deletions, Mr. Kennedy, please add Tab 1 to the agenda. Are there any questions to the Treasurers and Secretary Report from November 30, 2023? Seeing none, Mr. Kennedy, can you please add Tab 1B to the agenda, please? Tab 2A and 2B, Superintendent?
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to ask Mr. Questa to please provide highlights from this month's personnel report.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President, Madam Superintendent. So before your consideration this evening, you have a few items of importance from HR. You have five retirements. You have six resignations, five certified staff, and one non-certified. And perhaps the most important item for you to consider is the appointment of 27 new employees, including 17 certified staff. We have a few transfers, and those transfers are based, for example, in the Special Ed Department, if a student moves from one building to another, they are due to resignations, they are due to promotions, et cetera. We also have three promotions, and we have nine changes of salary because this individual has either obtained a master's or six-year level, or in one case, a doctorate. Thank you.
Mr. Questa, are there any questions to Tab A or Tab B?
Madam President, just one comment.
Yes.
I want to take this opportunity to say thank you to our teachers. It is amazing to see this agenda. With the Elizabeth Board of Education, we will be able to provide different kind of program, after-school program, launched tutoring. Different kind of program, and to be honest, it's not easy. It's not easy to allow teachers to say yes to different kind of program. That means I want to take this opportunity to say thank you to each one of you who signed your name to provide these great services to our great students. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Board Member Moreno Ortega. Any other questions for Tab 2A or 2B? Seeing none, Mr. Kennedy, can you please add it to the agenda? Any questions for Tab 3, Tuitions Report? Seeing none, Mr. Kennedy, please add it to the agenda. Any-- excuse me, Tab 4A, Tab 4B, Tab 4C, and Tabs 4D? Any, excuse me, Tab 4A, Tab 4B, Tab 4C, and Tabs 4D, Superintendent's Report, Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to welcome our instructional directors that have joined us this evening. And I'd like to ask Dr. Daphne Marchetti, our Director of Elementary and Secondary, to please share with our board your recommendation.
Good evening.
Can you hear me?
Good evening. In the agenda or in the board report, I have consideration a request for our math instructional coaches, along with the mathematics supervisor, to attend a math symposium during the school year. It would be held in January at no cost to the board. And the symposium will include current topics or issues that are related to mathematics. So there will be various topics where they would be content-based.
I'd also like to ask Mr. Milanese, our Director of Plant Property and Equipment, to be able to review the recommendations.
Good evening. I have two items for your consideration tonight. I have an alarm tech that is going to attend some classes at a expo in Atlantic City in March. I also have another consideration for you, for Mr. Arceary and for myself, to attend an expo in Atlantic City for our certification for CEFM.
Thank you, Mr. Milanese. And I'd also like to review two of the considerations on this report from Director Tracy Crosby, our Director of Early Childhood Education, who is celebrating this evening her mother's birthday. So on her behalf, with regard to the two-day self-regulation certification course, we will be able to provide the background for that certification. It's a two-day self-regulation certificate that focuses on the link between underlying brain connections and challenging behaviors, and teaches participants how to develop effective self-regulation interventions. So the course specifically focuses on working with children with autism, sensory processing disorder, as well as ADHD. So our early childhood social worker and psychologist who are attending this workshop are going to turn key this information to the early childhood staff, including the master teachers, and then, of course, social workers and LGTCs. And also, the last item on this report, recommended by Dr. Sandra Nunes, also celebrating her mother's birthday. This is the recommendation for staff to attend the NJTSL Spring Conference. And bilingual and ESL teachers will be attending the annual conference to enhance classroom practices in being able to address those academic, as well as those social emotional needs of our multilingual learners, while also being able to build upon the knowledge pertaining to the systems of support for our multilingual learners. So those are the two additional items that have been included on this report, and that completes the considerations.
Thank you so much, Madam Superintendent. Any questions for Tab 4? Seeing none, Mr. Kennedy, can you please add Tab 4A through Tab 4D to the agenda, please? Tab 5, Authorization Report, Madam Superintendent?
If I may, I'd also like to ask our Assistant Superintendent of Schools, Mr. Cortez, to provide a summary of the field trips included.
So this month on our agenda, we have 63 total field trips. 29 of the field trips are scheduled to K-8 schools, for K-8 schools, and 34 are for high schools. Three trips are scheduled for colleges and universities. 14 are for performing arts, and four are for various forensics competition. I would also like to mention that Liberty Hall Museum has been gracious enough to offer us 353 free tickets to our fourth-grade students to participate in their county Crown-to-County program. And those field trips will be scheduled during the months of February, March, and April.
Thank you, Mr. Cortez. We now turn to our authorizations, and I'd like to turn now to Dr. Ojeda, our Director of Special Services. If you wouldn't mind sharing your recommendations.
Of course. Thank everyone. I have four sets of recommendations for you to consider. They're on pages nine and 10 of your Award of Contracts report. They include, first, the recommendation for home care therapies for a student in district with a seizure disorder. Secondly, they include provision of home instruction for two of our medically fragile students. Thirdly, the provision of Spanish Orton Gelliam services.
Dr. Ojeda, do you mind going back one tab to the authorizations?
Sure, I don't think I have anything in authorization.
Oh, just the Special Olympics, if you wouldn't mind speaking to that, which is a wonderful annual event.
Oh, sure.
Please, thank you.
So this weekend, we will participate in Special Olympics with three schools here in our school district. They will depart from one of our schools on Sunday morning, along with two of their advisors, and then a handful of faculty and administrative support. And they'll participate in annual bowling competition that has always been kind of a very popular activity that they've done over the course of a few years, and the students really enjoy it.
Thank you, Dr. Ojeda. And we'd like to turn now to Dr. McMullin, if you wouldn't mind reviewing your items. Oh, I'm so sorry. My apologies.
How many more students? I know we always have a pretty good turnout.
It should be about 45 students.
Thank you.
Dr. McMullin, back to you. Sorry about that.
That's okay. Thank you. I have a couple items on pages two and three. I'm going to start with the first. The first two items have to do with the percussion, and it is seeking authorization to participate in the Elizabeth High School Percussion Ensemble with the US Bands and WGI Show Competitions for the winter and spring season. In addition, the percussion ensemble will be participating in the five events listed on page two at JFK High School, along with in Hamilton, New Jersey, Toms River, Fairlow, New Jersey, and then in Bethlehem, Pennsylvania. This is the second year that we have this competition happening. Last year, we actually were crowned with the 2023 US Bands Indoor Championship in Stand Still Marching Percussion, which is fantastic. This year, we will be including a marching band show, as well as competing in the national circuit of WGI at the regional level for the first time ever. So moving on, we have a few authorizations for the Winter Guard to be authorized to compete in the WGI Show Competitions in February in Philadelphia, along with in March, to be authorized to compete also in Bethlehem, Pennsylvania. Moving on to page three, we are also asking for authorization for the Winter Guard to participate in a competition in April in Dayton, Ohio. And again, to compete for the Elizabeth High School Winter Guard to be authorized for the Mid-Atlantic Indoor Network Show Competition as a total for the whole season. Moving on, we are seeking a recommendation for the Elizabeth High School Choir to participate in a free performance by the Signature Barbershop Quartet, where the choir students, who were chosen to participate as an educational outreach, where they will be performing. And then, throughout the day, the quartet will engage with the students, and they will be sharing their musical journey and demonstrating the unique element of the barbershop harmony. And finally, the Elizabeth High School Winter Color Guard to host and participate in a one-day main competition at the Thomas Dunn Sports Center on March 24th, where we would be hosting the competition here on site. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McMullin. And I'd like to now turn to Mr. Didanato, our Director of Student Services. Earlier this evening, we talked about launching the mentoring initiative. If you would please share with the board the authorization and the schools that are participating.
Sure, good evening, everyone. As we saw in the video with Commissioner Neron and Chief Sacko, we're going to be launching our new mentorship program at five of our Elizabeth schools, School 1, School 9, School 13, School 25, and School 28. The community police officers will connect individually with students to help foster patience and persistence and other social emotional skills. So we're really excited to launch that at the very beginning of next month.
Thank you, Mr. Didanato. And that completes the authorization reports. But I'd like to turn to our Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Jennifer Sedeno, to be able to review in the authorization reports the donations for this month.
Certainly. Good evening, everyone. This month, for your review, we have six donations that are on page nine of Tab 5. I would like to highlight three donations for this month. The first one is a $2,000 donation from the county for the Drama Club at Thomas Jefferson. There is a donation from the 2003 Union County On Stage School Grants. I also would like to thank the Acceleration Plus from Edits in New Jersey for a donation of 30 winter coats for school number four students. And then also, the Golconda Temple 24 Shriners for a donation of 25 bicycles for our students at school number nine. So those are just a few highlights of the six donations that are on page nine. We really do appreciate everyone that contributes to our students and our school.
Thank you, Dr. Sedeno. I'd like to now turn to Mrs. Finch Johnson, Assistant Superintendent of Schools, to be able to provide a report on the fundraising activities.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. So this evening, we have 147 fundraisers on the agenda for your approval this evening. The fundraisers, we have a variety of fundraisers. There's events for Valentine's Day. We have a variety of dances. We have a Build-A-Bear event, football jerseys over the uniforms due to the Super Bowl coming up. Go Baltimore, no. There's zumba nights, movie nights, a variety of food sales, as well as a flapjack breakfast at Applebee's.
Thank you, Mrs. Finch Johnson. And we were commenting on the color of your blazer there. Now we understand.
We see you're not shy.
I thought she was just supporting Jefferson High School.
To the board members, are there any questions or comments on anything you've heard for Tab 5?
Madam President?
Yes, Board Member Maria Otego.
Sorry to go by a little bit. Tab 4C is Filtry Consideration. This is not the first time I asked for a report about the filtries. I checked the board agenda for the last year, and we have a great opportunities and different kind of filtries. I know, as a teacher, it's teacher who need to support the principal to engage the principal. What is hard for the principal to be able to provide a filtry without the teacher's support. But I want to know what we can do as a board members or ask to review, you know, what the school need more another filtry. I can identify two, three schools, like for the last couple of years, they don't have filtry. I'm not talking about eighth grade, I'm not talking about seniors. I'm talking about third grade, I'm talking about fourth grade, fifth grade. Does mean, Madam President, we can reference to any of our committees to go deep and evaluate the situation about the filtry and make sure how we can engage and do our best to provide this kind of activities across the room.
Thank you, Board Member Maria Otego. We can bring that question and that information to Ed Management. Our chairperson, Pistana, said that she will handle that. Is that okay?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rose, and I believe you sit on that committee as well, so we'll report on that.
Yes.
Thank you.
Board Member Carvalho?
It all works itself out up here, doesn't it? Tab 5, page 2. Very excited to see that our band is going to be traveling a lot this year. Wanted an update on the truck that we were resketting to help them move around. Anybody? Mr. Kennedy?
We're working on that one.
Great answer.
All right, moving on.
What committee does that need to go to?
I'm sorry?
What committee does that need to go to? Planting property?
We approved it. We're just waiting for it. I'm assuming that's the case, that, so if we could find out where it is, what state, if we could go pick it up before February 24th, it would be great. Yeah, Pat? My next question is, I see that we're going to Dayton, Ohio. Is that a one-day trip, the band? They're staying over? That's a $675 is going to pay for all of that?
No, they would be flying.
Oh, great.
Yes, so that's the major competition, a culminating competition in Dayton, Ohio. It's like a world's competition where they would place. So as they compete throughout the season, they would move up in the ranks. So by them, by us hosting the competition here, in, I guess it's in March, the competition that we host here, it gives us points to move up further in the ranks and place. And they would be going, and they would be flying and competing there. And hopefully, we do very well.
I'm very excited.
And they fundraise and...
Wish them well. I'm just wondering how much, like, it says 675.
That's the fee to register. But then they're fundraising, and the kids have been fundraising all year to go.
Do we pay for any of that?
We have a budget, and we have been...
So will that be brought to the board, the budget, the flying, when? Terminal A? Okay, great. So looking forward to seeing that next. I promise, just, I think I only have one more question. My next question is, I'm really excited to see that we are going to be doing the Soccer Clinic for the special needs. You want, I'm stealing your thunder?
Well, I circled it, I was going to go there.
Madam President, may I differ?
Absolutely.
Go ahead.
Board Member Mark Wilson?
Okay, I'll continue on. So I'll start from the back. Okay, so Soccer Clinic, page eight, Authorization, is starting in March. So that's very exciting. So, you know, parents out there, you know, ask your teachers. Papers, flyers are coming out in the book bags. Keep, you know, keep your eye out for Soccer Clinic. Okay, so I'll now move to the front. I did have a question. Back on field trips, as I look through the field trips, transportation will be provided by school buses to be paid by the district. Transportation will be provided by school buses to be paid by the district. Transportation will be provided by the school buses, which is paid by the district. I'm sorry, as you see, I'm repeating because, you know, I know we watch, and I know that our transportation department said that, and a lot of parents were concerned about when you're going out on field trips, transportation is provided and paid for by the district. So I know some parents say, oh, we have to give some money, but know that the transportation during the school hours, correct, Mr. Kennedy? but know that the transportation during the school hours, correct, Mr. Kennedy, that buses are provided for the field trips?
Yes, that's what we're doing this year.
Okay. So I just wanted to focus on that. Also, continuing on this, super happy, and I want to highlight. So I know Special Ed Committee talks about CBI, which is Community-Based Instruction, where our children go out into the outside world to learn different things. And again, we just got a prime example on this agenda. Wow, wow, wow. Community-based instruction is happening in our district. We have children, and I'm just going to read through it, going to city grocers. We have our children, again, various field trips, to Aviation Plaza, to Walmart. They're shopping at Vermella. A community-based instruction will teach students how to price check Newark Museum. They're going to BJ's. They're going to Liberty Science Center. They're going to Lowe's. I'm sorry, I'm going to keep going. They're going to Costco. They're going to Jersey Gardens Mall. Thank you. Thank you. It's so important that our students not only are in our classrooms, but our special students go out, oh, to stop and shop. Sorry, I skipped that one. And Warren Aiko Park, learning how to purchase things. Super important to us and to our Special Ed Committee and to our board. So, super happy. Special Olympics, I know we talked about bowling is on its way, and best of luck to our winter guard. I know you mentioned it, and they are all over our agenda. They're going out. Best of luck to them. And I think that was it. Thank you.
Thank you. I love the excitement. I love the excitement. Any other board members for any questions or comments of anything that was said under Tab 5, authorizations report? Seeing none, Mr. Kennedy, can you please place it on the agenda, please? Tab 6, Finance and Accounting Report. Tab 6 and Tab 6A, excuse me. Are there any questions for Tab 6 and Tab 6A?
Madam President?
Yes.
Tab 6. Just wanted to check in with, maybe our finance also can help, Mr. Kennedy. Our Benecard Insurance, do they, is this the month that we renew with our Benecard insurance? Because I see it, it's on the agenda.
Benecard is July 1st, July 1st through June 30th.
That's what I thought. So it's just the voucher?
So the open enrollment for the next year is usually mid-May for the employees.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Tab 6 or 6A?
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Jacobs?
So in relation to Commissioner Barbosa's question on the Benecard, are we still receiving a rebate on our Benecard program?
We are.
Okay, good, thank you. I have one other question, also with Tab 6A. The invoice, the payment of $14,600 to M&amp;M Construction for envelope restoration at School 4. I think I had mentioned this in the past. Why are we keep receiving these invoices for a school that's been closed now? If you could get back to us with an answer on that, Mr. Kennedy, I appreciate it.
Do you have the answer for that one?
Mr. Jacobs, the only reason that we are still doing that is because we are keeping the fence around the perimeter of the building while the building is, you know, when they start the demolition, the fence will come off. So that's the only reason why we're paying M&amp;M Construction for the fence.
No, since you bring up the fence, I noticed that they moved the fence. Originally, it was right next to the pavement, and that was to prevent dumping. And now they've moved the fence all the way back to the school. So I'm hoping that it doesn't, that the problem is not reoccurring, where it becomes dumping before the school is demolished.
It has, and, you know, we keep cleaning it up and everything else.
Why was the fence moved then, anyway?
A couple of reasons. Remember, we emptied the building out, so the front of the building was used as the staging area. So that's why we did that, moved the fence. And I know that the state had had a couple of different companies that were looking at the demolition, so they came over and they moved the fence around because they had to look at different parts of the building, on the exterior of the building.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much. Board members, when you're asking questions, if you can just speak closer to the microphone so that we can hear you and that the recording can also hear you as well.
Madam President?
Yes.
I have a question on number 42, the installation of the vape monitors in student bathrooms. My question is, is this the first phase, or is this only being done in this high school?
They're payments to USA Architects for the vape monitor systems.
The payments are for the design of the vaping system. They came up with the design for the vaping system.
So this is just for the design for one, or is this for all the high schools?
No. So all the high school buildings, including the annex.
Okay. All the high schools, including the annex, they're designing it, and they'll bring it?
So already designed, they are working on it. They have, they are about, I said about 40% complete.
So that's not the fee, obviously?
No. That fee is only for their, you know, for their, they have like different, you know, for different building periods they built us.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, Mr. Kennedy, can you please add Tab 6 and Tab 6A to the agenda, please? Tab 7, Tab 7A and Tab 7B, Award of Contracts Report. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, Madam President. We're going to begin with Mr. D'Onato, Director of Student Services, who has several contracts included on the award of contracts.
Okay. Bear with me, we have...
And if all our board members can just wait until everything is done, and then we'll ask questions after, please?
Thank you. I have 13 contracts to review with you tonight. Our first contract on page 2 for consideration is with Gaggle Inc., specifically their Gaggle Therapy, to provide students with the opportunity for free telehealth therapy. Just so you know that all therapeutic sessions will be conducted by New Jersey licensed mental health professionals. Our second contract on page 2 is with HISP. HISP's role modeling program provides students with the opportunity to visit some of New Jersey's biggest corporations and meet leaders within the business world in order to expand the knowledge and understanding of the world. Our third contract on page 3 is with Dr. Ruben Lambert and Wisdom Springs Wellness Services. Dr. Lambert will provide up to 30 professional development workshop opportunities to our staff at various schools. These opportunities are designed to explore breathing techniques alongside positive thinking and affirmations to elicit positive responses with our students. Our next contract is an amendment of a contract with Atlas Search Health Solutions. This is to provide subnursing coverage for leave of absences. The same with our fifth contract with home care therapies. This is also to provide subnursing coverage. Our sixth contract on page 3 is with Score Inc. Score will be Elizabeth Public Schools' new college and career platform. Score will streamline the college application process and empower students to make informed decisions about their future. A nice bonus about that is this service will be available to our middle school students as well, ensuring that students think early and often about their post-secondary futures. Our next contract is with Minding Your Mind. Minding Your Mind will be a new program designed for all students, grades K to 12 at all Elizabeth Public Schools. Minding Your Mind will promote greater awareness and comprehension of mental health challenges, working towards ending stigma and negative behaviors. Eighth contract is with Mr. Kiva White and VIP Community Services. Mr. White will provide in-person professional development on the topics of serving and supporting our homeless students and families. Ninth contract on page 10 is another contract with HISP. This contract is for a new program entitled Ready Set Goals, and it's geared towards our ninth-grade students. HISP is launching this pilot program at Dwyer Academy in hopes to expand to all ninth-grade academies in the fall. Our 10th contract is with Duane West Pro-Athlete Inc., and this program is titled Bound for Greatness. It's designed to work with groups of students in helping them realize their great potential. Topics include anti-bullying, leadership, making good choices, goal-setting, respect, and integrity. Our 11th contract on page 11 is to extend our contract with Stepping Stones Group. Stepping Stones Group will provide mental health support at School 7 and 22, whose counselor is currently on leave of absence. And our next contract is under Tab 7B. Are we doing supplemental? Okay. The first contract on page 1... Oh, no? Wait on 7B?
You can do all 7.
That's all for Tab 7?
No, you can do 7A or 7B.
Oh, okay, 7B. Our first contract on page 1 is with Avid Center. Avid will provide, be providing, excuse me, professional development training. The training is entitled Building Capacity. This training is geared towards site team members to support the avid model at their schools. And the last contract on page 3 is with the National Hispanic College Fair. This organization will provide professional development to our counselors and to provide an exclusive college fair event for our town in the fall. And that concludes Student Services. Any questions?
Any questions from the board members regarding Student Services? Or, excuse me, regarding anything that was stated?
Yes, Madam President. Thank you.
Yes, Madam?
Yes, thank you, Director Antonio D'Onato. I have a special request for you. Thank you. For example, Tab 7, page number 4, is a great contract. We will provide mental health education program to students from kindergarten through 12. As a board member, for me, it is important that you at least provide some schools because it's to provide mental health. But the contract, sometimes you don't specify, give me a specification about the schools.
So is this for the Minding Your Mind program?
It's page 7, yes. Minding Your Mind.
Minding Your Mind will be available at all of our schools.
Does, can you please, when you make a recommendation, can you please write that? That way, I can identify what kind of support we provide for each school based on the needs.
Will do.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Yes, Madam President?
Yes.
Tab 7, first page. Moving forward, when we receive contracts for, I understand that this is for the spring sports, but instead of telling us, or is it possible to explain what we're purchasing as opposed to just telling us that we're purchasing items, athletic equipment?
For Mr. Candelino?
Yes.
Okay.
Just moving forward. Then page...
We will pass that on to Mr. Candelino. A description with the backup contract, please. Mrs. Carvalho? Absolutely.
We would have to, I'm sorry.
Page 3, board member, Mr. Kennedy, would you like to say something? Spring sports.
What we would have to do is provide you with the list of what was bid, which is pages and pages.
Could you send that to the board and not put it in our packet for a review before the meeting?
Sure. That's no problem.
Perfect. Would everybody be okay with that? Whoever wants to read it, reads it. All right. Page 3, Contract with Wisdom Springs Wellness. Whoever's in charge of that, thank you. Thank you for thinking of our teachers and staff. I know that nine times out of 10, we sit here and only talk about our children. Wonderful. Who's going to be able, it's only 30, so...
So it's up to 30. Any school that wants to bring Dr. Lambert in will have that opportunity.
That's a great opportunity. I really hope that our teachers take advantage of it. Will this be advertised to all of our teachers?
Yes. This information will be sent to our principals and our mental health professionals to set up the meeting times that work best for their school.
I was calm and relaxed just by reading it, so I'm very excited. One more question. Contract with Mind Your Body. Mind, minding your body.
Minding Your Mind.
Ugh, tongue twister. Minding Your Mind. Is that online or in person?
There are going to be all in-person trainings and assemblies for students.
Wonderful. Very excited to hear about that, that things are going back in person. Thank you. That was my question. And I'm excited that it's in person and not online. One more question.
No problem.
I promise, last one. Contract with Surf Pro for Central Union County. We're cleaning the pool or around the pool? What are we doing?
No. We cleaned the duck work in the pool. So we had a unit that was in there that was replaced, and we had to clean the duck work.
Very important. Thank you. I'm satisfied, Madam President.
Thank you. Any other questions for Tab 7, 7A or 7B?
Just one comment, Madam President.
Oh, I'm sorry.
They finished the directors? Oh, I have one...
No, we still have Dr. Marquetti, who's going to be presenting on the instructional contracts.
I'll react after her.
Thank you. Dr. Marquetti, Director of Elementary and Secondary, if you could present on your three contracts?
Sure. Thank you. For Tab 7 and 7B, I have several contracts. The first one is with the Institute for Multi-Sensory Education. This allows for teachers in pre-kindergarten through fifth grade to attend a summer session. It's made up of five days, where they will receive training from, and receive training on Orton Gillingham, which will focus on reading, spelling, and morphology. So this will be on a volunteer basis, and it'll be available for our teachers to sign up. The second contract is where we are requesting to partner with Rutgers Cooperative Extension for Age Program of Union County to implement an enrichment program entitled For Age Master Tree Stewards in Grade 4. The students will learn about trees through interactive activities. This is to be implemented in May 2024, and it would be at no cost to the board. The third contract is to partner with the New York Academy of Sciences to implement a Scientist-in-Residence Program in Grades 3 to 5 at Schools 1, 3, and 9. And the students will have the opportunity to interact and learn from scientists within their classrooms. They will be experiencing authentic, they will have authentic learning experiences. And again, this would be at no cost to the board. We are actually starting our kickoff meeting next week. So that'll be conducted next Tuesday, I believe, Tuesday or Wednesday, the 30th. So Tuesday, I think that is. The third, the fourth contract, which is under Tab 7B, that one is with Lexia Learning System. And this is for teachers in Grades K to 1 to attend a virtual training entitled Language Essentials for Teachers of Reading and Spelling, and the acronym is LETS, with a focus on reading, spelling, and language skills. And this would be done throughout the remainder of the school year at a cost of $33,475, and we would be funding that through ARP. Our next contract within this 7B is with Savis Learning. It's to obtain licenses to implement the program Success Maker for mathematics in Grades 6 through 8. As, it's going to serve as a supplemental intervention that is personalized for our students, and it would be implemented during the school year at a cost of $210,000, also funded through ARP. Our next contract is with ETA Hand-to-Mind. It's for supplemental materials and virtual training for teachers in Grades K to 2 with a focus on phonemic awareness and phonics. a focus on phonemic awareness and phonics, and it would be done during the school year at a cost of $47,857, and that is also ARP funded. Our next contract is with Think AUM, and they would be providing virtual training entitled Self-Regulated Strategy Development. This would be for curriculum writers and instructional coaches that work with English Language Arts in Grades K to 8, and they would be focusing on writing at a cost of $4,389, which is also ARP funded. And then the last contract under 7B is with Dr. Deborah Glaser, and it's for supplemental materials and virtual training for the implementation of Formine Mor-, excuse me, Morphine Magic in Grades 4 to 5 with a focus on word study, which would include prefixes, suffixes, and Greek and Latin roots. And it's to be implemented during the school year at a cost of $20,114, and it would also be through ARP funding.
Thank you, Dr. Marquetti. I believe there was a similar number of contracts with Mr. Donado as well. I'm going to now turn to Dr. McMullin.
Okay, so on Page 5, I have a contract with Volat Content Solutions to have a present virtual workshop for the Library Media Specialists at no cost to the board, which will cover an online collection development tool where librarians can learn to develop and search book collections in real time. In addition, on 7B, we have a few more contracts. For a contract with Evan Sebastián Henríquez for the Moving and Tech Specialist for the 23-24 Winter-Spring Season of Indoor Percussion Ensemble for the 23-24 School Year. In addition, for a contract with Dequan Sesams as the Director of the Percussion Ensemble for the Winter-Spring Season. Another contract with ARA Productions for Aaron R. Elsine for the arranger of the Percussion Ensemble for the Winter-Spring 23-24 Percussion Ensemble. In addition, we have two contracts for the Winter Color Guard. The first is with Manuel Suero Jr. for the Winter Color Guard Advisor, and the second is for Daniela Acosta for the Color Guard Advisor also.
Thank you, Dr. McMullin. I'd like to now turn to Mr. Milanes, our Director of Plant Property Equipment.
Thank you. I have quite a few items here, so. The first one I have is for CNM Doors, is to replace the doors on the second and third floor at Edison Academy. The next contract is with Mold Chevrolet to purchase three vehicles for our new supervisor team. The next contract is with Manhattan Welding. This is to replace the bridging for the boilers at School Number 18. The following contract is also for Manhattan Welding. This is to amend a contract that we have with them with the boilers because we decided to raise the floor of the boilers to a safer location, so in case we have floods in the future. The next contract is with Lilich Corporation. This is to abate some asbestos that we have in the cooling towers at the main complex or Old Seidwire Building. Following contract is with Commercial Interiors. This is to replace the stage currents at the Admiral Holsey Academy Auditorium. The next one is with USA Architects. They are going to be designing for classrooms and for special needs students at the old reference library and I believe that's Holsey Academy also. The next contract is with Surf Pro of Central Union. This is to clean the duck work at the pool at the high school. Following contract is with Northeastern Interiors. This is to replace flooring at the warehouse. We created some offices for our new staff, so we had to remodel the spaces there. The next contract is with Mary Paving. This is to redo the facade at the Elizabeth, Old Elizabeth High School Main Complex. This is a very extensive work that we have to do there. The next contract is with Land Associates. They are actually replacing, we're going to be replacing the heating system in the high school. It's a very aging system that we need to replace. And finally, we have a contract with Peter Chemicals. This is to buy calcium, the ice pilots for the winter months. And I believe I have one on Tab 7A, which is a change order for the baseball field.
My apologies, we have one more director to present. Dr. Ojeda, if you wouldn't mind presenting your contracts. Thank you.
Sure thing.
Thank you, Mr. Milanes also.
So we have four contracts for your review. First is a contract for nursing services with Home Care Therapies for a student with a seizure disorder. Secondly, we actually have an amended contract because that is for two medically fragile students receiving daily home instruction. In November, the board had approved one student and we actually have two. The third contract is for Spanish Orton Gillingham Instruction for a student in our secondary program who's in need of specialized reading support. And the final contract is with the Mountain Lakes Board of Education, which provides specialized evaluations for students who are deaf and hard of hearing. And that provides a number of different evaluations for three different students in our school system.
Thank you, Dr. Ojeda.
Thank you to our directors and for all your reports that you gave to us. At this time, are there any board members who would like to speak? Board Member Shevres?
Yes, just, I wanted to thank you, Plant and Property Director, for putting agenda the contract for the 4th classroom. I think that is something to, special service is looking for that. Just for the clarification for everyone, that Project B is looking to be during the summer time.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Any other questions to Tab 7A or 7B?
Yes, I have a comment, Madam President. Tonight, I want to say thank you to our Director of Elementary and Secondary Division, Dr. Daphne. You only know Director of Elementary, also Secondary. And the way you present the contract is easy for me to navigate, and I want to explain why. Because when I received the contract, the Tab 7, I had my Excel sheet. That means it's easy for me to identify the way you present, like the company, for example, perfect sample, Page 5, Tab 7, Page 5. Was easy for me to create my Excel sheet, the company, what we provide, what grade, and what is school. That means when I receive data about different kind of school, I say, oh, I see the connection the way you present with the data we receive. That means I want to take this opportunity to say thank you to you to make me easy my job to analyze this part of the Tab 7. I really appreciate it. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Any other questions for Tab 7A or 7B?
I have one question, just to help me understand. Perhaps Mr. Kennedy or the superintendent, when Dr. Marquetti mentioned ARP funding, that's the American Rescue Plan, is that?
That is correct, yes.
And that's grant funds, the ESER grant fund?
ESER, and then the stage in which we're at at this moment is expending the American Rescue Plan funding, which expires in September of 2024.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Madam President?
Yes, Board Member Jacobs?
Yes, I have a question for Mr. Milanes in reference to the change order in Tab 7 for the baseball turf field, which is actually looking very nice, looking very nice. For the $7,260 to change it from 185 feet to 190, what was that for?
The change order? The change order is actually to, I'm sorry, the change order is actually to move the lines for the soccer field. Because we originally, the soccer field was supposed to be 190 feet by 330. But because we added lighting into the field, some of the lightings were encroaching onto the field. So we needed to create a safer zone for the field, for the sidelines of the field, for the soccer field. The lights have to remain 25 feet away from the power lines outside. So that's what dictated that we had to do that. So we had to, we had no choice but to shrink the field by five feet.
So what's the border now between the end of the field and the fence? What is that, red rock?
You have about five feet of, you know, space. It's actually almost six feet of space.
And that's, that's red rock?
That's where?
Red, so what's the material used between the end of the field, the artificial turf, and to the fence?
It's actually the artificial turf. That's all part of-
It's all the way through?
All the way through, yeah. If you go, that's the, what do they call that, the warning track of the field. That's all artificial turf.
Are we planning to put bunting back on the fence by-
Oh, yes. Yes, we're in the process of doing that right now. We have to put something very hefty there because, you know, those columns are right in the field.
No, 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 no. I'm sorry, are we putting windscreen back on the gate by McDonald's?
Oh, yes. We're actually getting new netting and the bunting for that.
Is that going to be personalized or just regular windscreen?
Just regular.
I almost think that we don't need windscreen because then you don't get to see the beauty of that field. Thank you, Mr. Milanes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for this tab? Seeing none, I just want to thank our Directors of Special Projects, Plant and Property Equipment, Special Services, and Elementary and Secondary Education, and Student Services for being here this evening. Thank you for taking your time out of your busy schedules to be here and answer our questions. We truly appreciate you all. Mr. Kennedy, if you can just add Tab 7, Tab 7A, 7B to the agenda, please. Tab 8, Miscellaneous Communications. At this time, I'm going to have our Chairperson of Finance Committee, Mr. Jacobs, give his
Thank you, Madam President. The Finance Committee met January 24th. In attendance was Madam President Charlene Bathelis Georgia Lee, myself, Commissioner Stephanie Goncalves Pistana, Commissioner Stan Aron, Counselor Cologie, Judge Malone, Mr. Kennedy, Mr. Mahaltra, and Madam Superintendent. We basically reviewed the audit results, which were presented here earlier this evening. I want to take this opportunity to thank Mr. Swisher and Suplee, including his staff, for working with our business office to once again produce outstanding results. And I have to say, under the leadership of Madam Superintendent and the stewardship of Mr. Kennedy and Mr. Mahaltra, we can once say that we are rest assured that our district is being run in a physically responsible manner, which has allowed us to avoid other issues that other districts have to go through, such as referendums for bonds in relation to having to build new facilities and maintenance and things of that nature. So I know that also is a team effort, of course, with Mr. Milanes and the other departments as well. But I have to say again, it was another year of outstanding results, and also, this was the first time in the last seven years that we did have one audit finding. But I think that that audit finding was not warranted because of the fact that that was due to the extra funds during the COVID scenario, which produced that surplus, but you know, that was also a good thing. I think that, I think I thanked everyone. Oh, thank you to everyone also in the business office that works with Mr. Mahaltra and Mr. Kennedy to ensure that these results came through. Thank you so much, we appreciate you.
Thank you. Any other, oh, no, that's it? Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Jacobs? Seeing none, Mr. Kennedy, if you can add that to the agenda, please. Tab 9, Claims List. Are there any questions or comments to the claims list on Tab 9? Seeing none, Mr. Kennedy, if you can add that to the agenda. Tab 10 to 10P. Before I accept any questions or comments to this, to the resolutions, I just want to acknowledge the four resolutions that are going to be honoring next month. The Career and Technical Education Month in February, Children's Dental Health Month, Honoring Harriet Tubman, African-American Heritage Month, and National School Counseling Week. Just wanted to recognize those, since we're going to be honoring them next month or the come a month before. Are there any questions for Tab 10 to Tab 10P under Resolutions? If my board members could just bring it down a little bit there? Thank you so much. Because I can hear you all there. Any questions or comments?
Madam President, when you say question or comment is about just the-
Tab 10?
No.
The whole, Tab 10 to 10P, Resolutions?
No.
No? Okay. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, if Mr. Kennedy, if you can put the resolutions for Tab 10 to 10P on the agenda, please. Board Member Marino Antelo, do you have another question regarding the entire agenda?
I have a comment.
Or a comment?
Yes. First, I want to say thank you to every board member tonight. This month is the month New Jersey recognizes board members, but I want to say something to the community. Elisa Public School is ranking number 12, and Elisa High School is ranking number 1. You can check the news, the data from 2023 to 2024. The student around New Jersey is 1.4 million childrens. 1.4 million children. And I want to explain the community. When we have 1.4 million childrens in New Jersey and we're ranking number 1, and number 2 in New Jersey, no matter what they say some member of the community, we're doing great. Thank you, every board member. Thank you to our director. Thank you to our teachers, parents, and guardians. We're doing a great job, no matter what say some member in our community. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
You're welcome, thank you. Any other comments from our board members? Okay, thank you. Thank you. At this time, we have a motion to second to approve the entire agenda in its entirety.
I moved the motion to approve the agenda in its entirety.
I second the motion.
Thank you, it's been moved and probably seconded to approve the agenda in its entire enti-, entire, excuse me, in its entirety. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call. Seeing none, roll call, Mr. Kennedy?
Barbosa.
Yes, with the exemption of Tab 7, Page 1.
Carvalho.
Yes.
Chavez.
Yes, with abstention in Tab 4A, Page 1. Tab 4D, Page 1. And, yeah, the same page for the Page 1.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Marina Ortega.
Yes.
Neron.
Yes, with abstention from Tab 4B, Page 1.
Goncalves Pastana.
Yes, with an abstention of Tab 5, Page 9.
Rivera.
Yes.
Georgia Lee.
Yes. Thank you to our board members and to our Directors. Before I read the statement for private session, I just want to thank the entire IT department for, yes, that's right, thank you. I want to take a moment to just thank you guys for all that you guys do throughout the year. I know we don't normally recognize you, but I wanted to just honor, take a moment to honor you for always streaming, always making sure our microphones are on point. The videos that you guys do and just doing the setup. People don't know that you guys are also the ones behind in doing the setup. So I just wanted to thank you for all the work that you guys do, and I really appreciate you, and I know that our board members do as well. I want to thank our Superintendent, our Business Administrator, our Assistant Superintendents, and all the members of the Administration Team for assisting with putting together the Board Recognition Month. I truly appreciate all that you have done today to recognize all the board members here and our hard work. So thank you for doing that, we truly appreciate that. Thank you again to our Directors, I've mentioned that before. I just want to thank our Student Representative, Maria Zavado, for being here as well. And if I forgot anybody, please don't charge it to my head, charge it to my heart, just charge it to my head. But I just thank everyone for being here. The President requests a motion to go into private session to consider matters exempt under the Open Public Meeting Act specifically for discussion of personnel interview, legal matters, settlement agreement for DV and Department of Labor matters. The Board will reconvene in public and make a formal motion. May I have a motion and a second to approve this? Or to go into private, please?
I motion to go into private session.
A second.
It's been moved and probably seconded to go into private session. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Barbosa.
Yes.
Carvalho.
Yes.
Chavez.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Marina Ortega.
Yes.
Neron. Goncalves Pastana. Rivera.
Yes.
Georgia Lee.
Yes. And before we go into private, I just want to also thank our security guards and our police officers for being here as well. Thank you. We are now in private session.
Additional items to the agenda, please?
Yes, we have a resolution for settlement agreement DV and a resolution for appointment of vice principal of Johnny Dwyer Technical Technology Academy.
Thank you. Our superintendent has to do the HIV report? Okay. Very much. Would anyone like to tell the community anything while we wait for our superintendent to do the report?
Anything else we could skip past?
Okay, well I just want to wish everyone a happy new year.
We could vote on the agenda.
But don't we have to add the HIV report to the agenda to be voted on?
We already voted on it, she's just got to do her report.
She's here. Thank you, Ms. Fitzjohnson. At this time, we're going to have our superintendent present the HIV report.
My apologies for the tardiness in returning from executive session. So our HIV presentation for this evening pursuant to board policy 5131 point one harassment, intimidation, and bullying and New Jersey statute 18A colon 37. The results of each investigation shall be reported to the Board of Education no later than the date of the next board meeting following completion of the investigation and include any services provided, training established, discipline imposed, or other action taken or recommended by the chief school administrator. Since our last Board of Education meeting on December 13, 2023, and through January 23, 2024, our school counselors, school-based social workers, and supervisor of anti-bullying have completed 56 HIV investigations. Of these investigations, 15 cases were founded for HIV as per New Jersey law. There were 29 males, 31 females, 50 regular education students, and 10 special education students that were the alleged victims. There were 50 males, 35 females, 74 regular education students, 10 special education students, and one non-student that were the alleged offenders. Of the 15 cases founded for HIV, one case was founded based on race, national origin. One case was founded based on religion. One case was founded based on gender identity and expression. Three cases were founded based on mental, physical, or sensory disability. And 15 cases were founded based on other identifying characteristics. Of the services provided and actions taken for those investigations, there were 17 skill development lessons and trainings, 53 counseling sessions, three targeted behavior interventions, nine referrals for outpatient mental health treatment, six classroom changes, three changes of school placement, four administrative counseling sessions, 15 in-school detentions, 32 parent conferences, two referrals to outside agencies, 23 out-of-school suspensions, and 13 cases are continuing to be monitored. The HIV statute further requires that at the next regularly scheduled meeting, after board members receive the initial report of HIV investigations, that the board issue a decision in writing to affirm, reject, or modify the superintendent's decision pertaining to the 32 cases that were reported to you at the last board meeting on December 13, 2023. In order for you to do so, the investigation summaries from those investigations which were reported to you at the last board meeting have been provided for your review prior to voting. And that completes this month's HIV presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. In addition, I know our superintendent has the community updates. Just want to let everyone know the community updates will be uploaded online in English and Spanish in a video, so please stay tuned for those updates. At this time, is there a motion and a second to approve the additional items that were stated prior and added to our agenda?
I make a motion to approve the additional items added to agenda.
I second that motion.
Thank you. It's been moved and probably seconded to add those additional items to the agenda. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Barbosa.
Yes.
Carvalho.
Yes.
Chavez.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Marina Ortega.
Yes.
Neron.
Yes. Congratulations.
Gunkavas Pustana.
Yes, congratulations.
Rivera.
Yes, congratulations.
Dorjlee.
Yes, congratulations to our new vice principal. At this time, before we conclude the meeting, is there any questions, comments from our board members? Seeing none, may I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Second that motion.
It's been moved and probably seconded to adjourn the meeting at 8:38 PM. Roll call, please.
Barbosa.
Yes, good night.
Carvalho.
At 8:38, yes.
Chavez.
Yes, good night, everyone.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Marina Ortega.
Yes, good night.
Neron.
Yes, have a great night, everyone.
Gunkavas Pustana.
Yes, good night, everyone.
Rivera.
Yes.
President Dorjlee.
Yes, have a great night, everyone. Thank you, and God bless.